Regular council meetings called to order at 6:00 P.M. President or Council President Chris Michon, Councilmember Charbonneau, Councilmember Curtis, Councilmember Alfred Chase, Treasurer City Clerk James Johnson, City Manager Jonathan Delaprier. Thank you. Mr. Burnier is here and there are no other department heads online, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is additions and deletions to the agenda. Before I told the councils for their possible additions or deletions, edits or changes, I have two very simple edits. There will be on number four, just an edit to the caption, and that's just due to a communication override of timing between myself and the city manager. So when it was posted, one, two words were left off. So on number four, it will now say confidential attorney-client communications regarding legal services, executive session 1 VSA Section 313A1F. So legal, regarding legal services, what's added to that? And then on number nine, the employee evaluations, the updated value language will say employee evaluations added is city official. Okay? So the whole thing will say employee evaluations, city official, executive session 1 VSA Section 313A. Okay? So we're still on additions and deletions. President of the Council?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
No, ma'am.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
City Manager?
Only, so number six should say wastewater and water allocation. There are two, there are two parts.
Wastewater and water?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Are you good? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the regular meeting minutes of October 7, 2024. It counts payable warrants for October 7, 2024, October 14, 2024. Okay. I'm just looking at my own type. Payroll warrants, October 17, 2024, liquor licenses, vendor permits, and special events permits.
There was one in there.
Okay. And what is the addition?
It was a liquor.
Yeah, it's a wine tasting or something down there.
Okay, so we need to add?
It's not adding.
Oh, that's a liquor license.
We haven't had any in a while in that.
Oh, this is the one that's in there now. Okay. So liquor licenses, vendor permits, and special events permits.
Yeah, it's Edin Ice. They have an event on November, oh, 26.
Okay, so do you want to just tell us a little bit about that? Are we good? We're good? Do you?
Yeah, that's the only one I got.
That's the only one?
Yeah.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated with that identification?
I have something I want to talk about.
Sure.
Employee evaluation on the minutes. The very last paragraph has me making motion and second.
You did both things?
No, sir. Mr. Vachshahn did the first and I did the second.
Okay. I'll change that before I, before I file them.
Okay. So on employee evaluation, second paragraph, we're changing it to Mr. Michon made the motion. Thank you.
I have two questions.
Yes.
The first is on the first page of the check warrant report titled 10-7 to 10-7. And I'm just wondering if someone can tell me what the Aldrich and Elliott $21,203.43 item was for?
I don't know what.
Engineering for the water tower and pump, buffer of pump station.
Thank you. And I'll just note that I'm not, I'm going to recuse myself from the vote on the liquor license because it's for my sister-in-law's business.
Oh, really?
I got nothing to say about that.
How do you get along with your sister-in-law?
I'm not saying a word about it.
Okay. And so any other questions beyond that?
No.
Okay. Okay. So now may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change to the minutes as identified by Councilmember Curtis?
So.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Ayes have it and the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is number four, confidential attorney-client communications regarding legal services, executive session 1 VSA Section 313A1F. May I please have a motion to find that premature public general knowledge of the confidential attorney-client communications made for providing legal services to the city council would place the city in a substantial disadvantage because disclosure of the otherwise confidential advice and communication would harm the city by waiving the city's attorney-client privilege 1 VSA Section 313A1F. So have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Ayes have it and the motion is carried. May I now have a motion, please, to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications with the city attorney for the purpose of providing professional legal services and invite city attorneys David Rue and his colleagues, if they are online, Bariya Smith, John Klush, Marilyn Mahusky, and the city manager and the treasurer city clerk into the executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A1F. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, the motion is carried, and we are now in executive session. We're out of executive session, no action was taken. The next item on the agenda is the city financial position discussion. I'm going to begin that discussion, please, with our city manager. You should all have a document that was handed out to you. Kevin, do you have one?
Yep.
You can have mine, Kevin.
Same one, I got this.
Oh, okay. Okay. So we went through this document at our department head meeting, but it's changed a little bit. So I just want to also make sure that our council members, hello, understand what is a brief summary of what it was, what's on here to start. So, Jonathan, and I know that Tom is here in case of any questions.
Okay. So this is an Excel spreadsheet that I had started back in, I would say, April, when I reached out to department heads to start getting a list of what grant projects they were working on. So what you see here is a compilation citywide of everything that is currently in process or approved. We do have a number of grants that are still pending, waiting on a decision from the funding agency, but this just gives you a good snapshot of kind of the total grant funding and project funds that we're working on, and then what match that our portion is that we're responsible for. Some of the, or various grants in this list are in different stages. So for example, the top one, the bylaw update, the planning and zoning department just closed this grant out, so we should be getting the final reimbursement within the next week or so. So yes, again, this is just kind of a snapshot list in each one of these. They got their own separate files that show money in, money out, where the project is to date, but this is kind of that just 30,000-foot view of the total projects that we have.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Jonathan, what is ARPA? Is it ARPA?
Yep.
Okay. And can you just tell me, I noticed that each one of those five items, looks like all five items are for the same amount.
Correct.
And can, because I've never, I've never been a part of these conversations, what is permit assistance?
So I can elaborate on those a little bit. So the state came up with the three-acre rule. So any parcel that we have or anyone has that's over three acres, there's going to be, need to be done some initial stormwater engineering, design, and then construction. So we as a city have five three-acre sites that are over that three-acre parcel threshold that are going to require us to do some action. The state, through their ARPA funding, has granted funding to municipalities to help with this. So this is, we get up to basically $50,000 per site of engineering. Myself, Tom, and the mayor are working on a contract right now with the engineer. They're far less than that $50,000 total, so we won't need to use all of it, but that's what those three projects, or sorry, five projects are. We discussed this a little bit today, that this is just the engineering and not the construction cost. So as we start to get this engineering completed and submit it to the state, I really hope that the state figures out a way to help municipalities with some of these construction costs, because I anticipate probably a quarter million to a million dollars in construction of these, whatever it is that's designed. You know, Tom brought up a good point today about Croydy Beach, that we may lose campsites due to, we may have to find a place to put some sort of stormwater retention pond or some sort of infrastructure. So per site, we may have to take a peek and, you know, what best suits us and where is that going to go, but also where's that cost and funding going to come from?
Thank you.
Yep.
So if those are costing less than the grand amount, what happens to the rest of the grand amount?
It just goes back to the state. The state just doesn't give it to us. So I'm hoping they'll then take, if there's leftovers from every municipality, and figure out a way to provide some construction funding, but that's just the max amount we can use.
Any questions?
No, I was here for the department head.
I know.
So I got most of it today.
Kevin, any questions?
No. Okay.
Okay. Well, you know what, I just, maybe you want to just say what unknown project is, because I picked on you today on that.
That's okay. So the one that you're going to see down towards the bottom, Vtrans Grant and Aid, this is for stormwater assistance. It's a guaranteed grant program that a few years ago, it used to be a pilot program that the D.C., the stormwater folks started, is now a permanent program that lives in Vtrans. It's called the Grant and Aid Program. So we, as the city board, get $15,000. That dollar amount is just based on the number of hydrologically connected road segments that our municipality has, but it's a guaranteed, it's a non-competitive guaranteed grant program that we can apply for every year to help with stormwater infrastructure. The unknown project piece of it is that we can apply for the program without already determining a project. So we, this, we have till the end of September next year to identify a project and complete it. So, you know, working with Tom over the winter to identify what area he would like and then complete that work next summer.
Thank you. As I, I know the words would quit on someone saying like, what's the unknown?
Absolutely.
Okay. So thank you for that. Okay, so now we're going to, we're still on discussing the financial position, and I'm going to turn it over, please, to the treasurer so that he can speak about some financial decisions that are going to be upcoming and that we are going to need to be discussing further.
Okay. So for a few months, well, a year or so, we've had cash flow problems in the city. It all goes back to the original cause of it, which is the water and sewer. We have cash now because tax money's coming in, but we're going to have to pay back that line of credit that we borrowed and pay the regular bills plus the construction loans and all that type of thing. So that's where we are. Last I looked, we had about $900,000 in the available funds. That includes the checkbook and the sweep. That's got to get us to November 15th. Hopefully, we get another $2 million in, but we got a lot of money we got to pay back in the line of credit. So we'll pay as much as we can and start borrowing again until May 15th, when more money comes in. So why do we have a cash flow problem? There's several things. I mean, we have these grants, you have to apply to get reimbursed, but you got to have the cash to pay for it upfront. That's, that's part of it. There's some over expenditures in the budget that weren't budgeted, but the main reason was the water and sewer falling behind to the $200,000, between $400,000 and $500,000 a year for several years. And the general fund is, is paid for that shortfall. The due-to due funds for the water and sewer, the last time I looked, were $1.6 million if they, those two funds owe the general fund. All right? Basically, that's where, what reserve the city did have at one time went, paid for the water and sewer. My, my take on this, and to me, in my mind, the only solution for this is the rates in the water and sewer are going to have to go up, and I think that the water and sewer funds are going to have to borrow money to start paying back that million and a half, million and six. One alone isn't going to solve the problem, I don't believe. It's got to be a combination of the two. And that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. So.
I mean, I can say one thing. There's been comments out there that there's money missing and all that stuff. There's no money missing. Okay? The audits can prove that. Nobody is sticking their fingers in the tail because there's a lot of us down there watching it. Jonathan, myself, we have two signals out of my, nothing gets go out of the office without two signatures, two people knowing it. Mayor has to sign it, Jonathan signs it, we sign it. So I just want people to understand that's not the case, never has been and is not going to be. But the fact remains that the water and sewer were the initial cause of all this, and now it's gotten up to the point where they owe us a million and a half. And that's, we don't have any reserve to fall back on because our reserve has been, is gone, basically what it is. So that's, council's going to have to make a hard decision here, what to do somewhere along the line. The sooner the better, because if it doesn't, if we don't do anything, it's just going to keep snowballing year after year after year.
Right. What's been continuing from the prior years.
Right.
We need to.
Right. Well, that's a good example, because last year we had, we borrowed $2 million, something like that, something, can't remember exactly now, but on July 1, I had to borrow $800,000 from the new line to pay off the old line. So on day one, we were $800,000 in the hole. We've got a line of credit to 2.8, I guess. We're up to 2.4 so far. Hopefully, we won't have to borrow any more on that until taxes come in, but to be aware, that's about the middle of January, somewhere in there, we're going to have to start borrowing that line of credit again to get us to May 15th.
Okay. So thank you. So I will tell you that city manager and I had some discussions today, and we are going to be going through very specific financials and working together to make sure that we have some financial packages put together for the next council meeting that include, you know, attention to the water and sewer, and then we are going to be able to look at spreadsheets and we have the capital budget now, it came in from the various department heads, we'll have all of that for the council. So the next council meeting, we should have all of these financials together so that we can have a really in-depth conversation on all of this. But I'd like to just hear some comments from the council on what the treasurer has said, if you have any questions for the treasurer.
Can I say one other thing?
Of course.
Everybody's got to be aware that it's not the expenses that caused this, because we set a tax rate supposedly to cover the expenses. It's the revenue side, it's a cash flow, the revenue coming in. It's not.
The timing.
I mean, you can, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not on the expense side, it's on the revenue side, on the cash.
But I'm saying, but you're playing catch-up for several years.
Oh, yeah. The last time there, it was increased, I went back to 2016 to analyze this thing, and the $200,000, $400,000, that's eight years now. Eight times four is more than a million, two, million and five. So, you know, we've done the best we could with what we get, take in on the water and sewer for those years, but it wasn't good enough. Employer councils have been aware of this, because I've made it pretty clear for a long time that if we didn't do something, something's going to happen. Like you said today, here it is.
Here it is. It's arrived. So just some general questions or any questions? So when we're working on this, you know, anything?
Has the rate increase helped at all?
I think that last rate increase added about $120,000 to the collection, but the average loss for all those years was about $430, I think.
I'm still waiting for the sampling, the quarterly sampling.
Yeah.
That we should have had in June, so we're going to have to borrow money to put the water and sewer at zero and stop losing money. I think it's a thousand a day we're in the hole, not working. So we do, we need a very serious discussion.
And we intend on having that.
So I've, I've been spending a lot of time thinking about this, and I'm doing my level best to understand all of what's in there. The annual report, and I've been looking at the, where we are at this moment, this kind of a quarter of our way through the year at this point, I don't believe that the city's at risk of bankruptcy. I do believe that the city is in, has got a significant problem that's been kicked way down the road, and, and so I have some concerns. I'm certainly, I'm sympathetic, Jim, to your point that we're going to have to do something about the $1.6 million itself. I'm certainly not interested in borrowing money unless we're clear about where the change is going to happen that's going to make this change. And I, I'll just say, I am mystified about what looks to me like a practice of budgeting for sewer and water that is expense-based budgeting. We just, year after year, I can look at it right here, years 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, we did the same damn thing every year. We looked at it, we said, well, our expenses are $1.5 million roughly in the sewer budget, therefore it must be, we're going to take in $1.5 million, and we budgeted that as if it was revenue, which is ridiculous. That's, that's absurd. You can't say, I'm going to spend this much money, therefore I automatically am going to make this much money. It doesn't work. So I'm, forgive me, I don't mean to be preachy, but I'm tired of this conversation, because I feel like we've been raising this question now, some people, for a lot longer than I have who are in the room here. But every year, you look at it and you can see in 21, 22, the budget was $1.446 million, we only took in $1,085,000. And the next year, we did the same thing again. We budgeted for $1.511 million, and we took in $100,000 less that year in sewer. And then we did the same thing again this year, almost $1.5 million that we proposed, and I don't see any indication that we're going to make anything like that. So do we need to raise the rates? Yes. I would like a clear, I guess, one of my concerns after spending hours this weekend trying to understand this budget is I remain mystified about the, the way that salaries get allocated, not even just from department to department, like, you know, the example that we keep going back to is the former city manager's allocation of her own time between the general fund and the sewer and water fund. But even within departments, there are usually four different things that get chunked up, and the budgets are mysteriously, the salaries are mysteriously allocated between one to another. Somebody, somewhere must know where that is, but I can't find any indication of what salaries add up to what and how I can follow them in here. So I'd like, it's akin, Jonathan, to I think what we started asking for earlier in the summer, which is an appropriate way to allocate time and tracking our hours so that we know what we're actually looking at. But I can't, I can't keep looking at a budget that has, you know, for sewer, we've got sewer collection, sewer plant, sewer administration, personnel expenses, other expenses, and capital improvements. Those are all different pieces of the sewer budget, and every one of them, maybe with the exception of debt, every one of them, I think, have personnel expenses in them, some kind of salary allocation in them. So I want to know how we're allocating our time from place to place in here so that we can get a straight answer on what that, what it's really costing us. That would be really helpful to me when we have this conversation. Even if we solve the problem by raising the rates and borrowing money to pay back the reserve fund effectively that the city has provided over these years, between whatever money was there, I don't know how much it was, five, six, eight years ago, right, that was acting as a cushion, and now a $2.8 million loan, line of credit that we're currently out on, $2.4 million, right, as of today, right? Even if, even if we solve for that problem and kind of pay the city back for a significant chunk of that line of credit money, in the long run, we haven't solved the real problem, which is that we, we have no reserve, therefore we're spending, every time we want to, we want to buy something, we buy it on credit. So there's, there are other ways, I know of at least one and maybe several other ways that we can try and create new kinds of revenue. And, and I don't want to have this conversation about those two solves without a conversation about the rest of the picture, that's going to actually build up a reserve so that when we need a new police cruiser or a new police department, you know, a new, a new headquarters for our police, or whatever it might be, instead of having to borrow all of that money, we actually have a reserve that we can draw from. And when I talk with other cities, I understand that there are ways to actually create those funds and fund them. So I, I guess the last thing I'll say is I'm concerned about the budget because I can't figure out when, when do we actually put numbers on paper for the budget? And how do we get to the budget so that we're not all looking at something that we don't feel like we can actually tinker with? Like, I want these conversations in preparation for the budget conversation, I guess, not as a part of the budget conversation. So those are the things that I've been losing sleep over for the last few days. And so allocation of hours and a clear understanding of if, if we have a person's salary in sewer and water that's divided into three categories, I'd like to know where they are and what it adds up to. It would just be really helpful to me to know that. Because honestly, I'll just say it, we may have an expense problem too, right? If we, it may not all be about how much we have to raise our rates, it may also be about where are there places where we could legitimately make cuts, at least in the short term, to try and resolve this problem that we've gotten ourselves into. Thank you. I think that's all that I've been wanting to get off my chest.
Yeah, that's good. So before we go, Kevin, that's exactly what Jonathan is aware that we need, and we're going to put crayons down now on that, right? Okay. And those numbers. And it is an expense problem as well as a revenue problem, and there are different areas that we can get revenues, okay? And there are different types of revenues, not just the tax revenues.
Right.
We definitely are there. I do want everybody to understand that use of the word bankruptcy is something that is so definitional in the code of bankruptcy, okay? The requirements to be bankrupt is not anything that the city is, you know, we don't have these scores, we don't have, just because you may pay one bill later or three bills later, it does not mean that you can't meet your ducks in the requirements of bankruptcy. So please, I, I beg people, don't throw these words out there. These are legal terms that, when they're out there in the public, okay, the distortion of what the people hear and the panic that's instilled out there is so unhealthy, okay? Because bankruptcy is a specialized area, okay? Especially municipal bankruptcy, and there are requirements, and we are not bankrupt. So just want to make that very clear. And as somebody who actually works in that field, I'm telling you, don't throw that word around lightly. Kevin, I'm sorry. Did you have any questions or any?
Not on it, no.
Well, I'm glad to see there's somebody else moving to sleep over this besides me. I'm glad to see there's somebody else moving their sleep over this besides me.
We don't want you to be alone.
The reason, Rick, is I want, I think we should borrow the money to pay back the general fund, because that is our reserve.
Yes.
And if we wanna buy new police cruisers, buy equipment, we have nothing to fall back on now. And sometimes you need a new car, you need equipment for the fire department. But you gotta, you gotta raise the rates on the sewer thing. You know, if we raise them like we did last time, and raise $120,000, you're looking at three, at least three more rate increases with the same proportion. And the expenses are going up every time, you know what I mean?
Right, we're not actually getting ourselves out of the hole.
No. Because even when we get back to ground zero on all these things, you're still gonna have to raise the rates of, you know, to make up for the increase in expenses. So it's not just getting back to ground zero and going away. It's still gonna keep this going.
Yeah, and I think what I'm hearing from the counselor is that he understands that request, but wants to have some solid information so we can have that intelligent conversation. And that's why we need these specific spreadsheets and, you know, cash flow statements and income statements and the allocations. And we need to have that so we, we know that there's a time crunch. And so, that's our agenda, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
So, if you're gonna raise the rates again...
Say it again.
If you're considering raising the rates again, in order to get it on the March billing, you've gotta raise the rates before November 1st. Otherwise, it's gonna be June 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
Just the council's information.
Anything else you wanna throw? No, just...
No, I've thrown it out.
That's good, that's good.
I've been throwing for years, and I'm gonna hold on.
Well, that's the thing too, is that it has been discussed for years, and now it just can't be kicked down the road. And some, we have to take a serious look at this, and we have to make some hard decisions. But we also need to have some real numbers to crunch. And, you know, audits are wonderful, because they are historical audits, and, you know, and they look at something entirely different. A financial audit looks at something that's entirely different than what we're assessing right now. So...
So can I ask one more question?
Oh, you have as many questions as you have.
Just in light of Jim's comment, it makes me wonder if we should be scheduling a special council meeting between now and the end of the month, to spend time focusing on just this question, so that we can...
Jonathan and I already have that date in mind, but we weren't gonna mention that until the end, so that everybody would not hear that word, special. But since you brought it up, and since you suggested...
I asked for it.
Yes, we are, we are actually going to be sending a special session for that.
Okay, the sooner I have that date, the better, because I have a lot of travel, I'm trying to juggle in the next two weeks.
Okay. So anyway, so we, we do have that, we discussed that today.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you be willing to take questions?
Okay, that's it for me.
I don't know what else I can throw.
No, that's okay. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is preliminary wastewater and water allocation application anticipated vote. Are you gonna speak to that?
It's pretty much self-explanatory. It's a parcel that the gentleman presides who wants to build on. We have plenty of water, any sewer allocation to accommodate this request, just a residential hold.
Okay. This is Penny Lane.
Yes. We're dealt with my road.
So, do you have anything to add, or where? So, may I have a motion to approve the preliminary wastewater and water allocation application? The motion do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions, comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Do I have to sign this, or, or do you sign this?
The sewer's on the second page.
Must be you who's never signed one.
No, I was looking for the line, and unless, like Tom says, the report says city council, I just don't wanna always sign on the wrong one. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Vermont Transportation Class Two Paving Grant, TA 65, request for reimbursement with an anticipated expense. Are you gonna speak to that one time?
Sure, that's the, that's $200,000 grant that we received for the Glen Road paving project. Technically should have been paved last year, but for those that don't know, we took that whole year last year to get the second half of the Glen Road changed from a class three down to a class two, so we can utilize that out to the prison. For many years, it, it stopped right around Penny Lane, actually. So we took that first year of that grant to get that road changed, so it paid for.
Okay. Is there anything you need to add?
Just that this, the standard Vtrans grant, you can see their local programs that they have here, that they run out of the local district office. The way these grants work is, you're on a cycle typically three to five years, and then it comes back. So, we shouldn't expect another class two paving grant for about three to five years.
Okay. Okay, so, may I have a motion, please, to approve the Vermont Trans Class Two Paving Grant, TA 65, request for reimbursement? Motion do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there a question?
I have one question.
Further discussion?
This might be best directed to Tom, if that's okay. At our last meeting, Tom, I'm, you may not have been here, there was a resident who came who was a tenth of a mile or something beyond the end of the project, and just raised the question. I just wondered if, we didn't have any follow-up to that, and I just wondered if you could let us know where we, where that stands, or what the issues are.
Well, that, that section's always been dirt. Unfortunately, it's over 1,400 feet long, so there's no pavement on it at all. I went out, measured it, got an estimate, what I thought the estimate would be at Gray's current bid price, which would have been about $66,000. So I reached out to Gray's and asked him to give me a price for it. Of course, it's not higher than his bid right now, and so his initial cost was higher, and it was gonna be about $88,000 to pave that section of road. I feel for them, I do. I, we can't budget enough money to pave some of the roads we have now. That road, I can at least grade. I'm suggesting not paving it.
Okay, that's, that's really helpful. Thank you, that's really helpful.
Sorry, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
And there is a spot for all the cruisers.
Over here? Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is payment to Mystique, sorry, heights for water tower project anticipated vote. Who's going to?
So this, we're now at a point, I'm sure the council knew back in the summer, that we had finalized things with Gina Gray and the site on the actual water tower that's sitting behind the tavern. This next piece is for the booster pump station that's gonna sit near the reservoir for this project. And so what, there was an agreed-upon amount of $5,000 for the purchase of a little piece of property and the easements, the B E C, and they need to do that. We're now in a position where we've agreed upon the dollar amount and the language and the easements, and so we would need the city council to approve sending this money for the attorneys to hold until closing.
Right, they have to hold the binarist row, and so we can go forward with the period that we have in place. So, may I have a motion to authorize the payment to the, our law firm's account to hold for Mystique Heights for the water tower project? I have a motion do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, question?
What was the total?
Five thousand. Further discussion?
It's just 5,000?
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. And you make sure that that money gets over to our law firm.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda are employee evaluations, city official executive session 1 B S A, section 313A. And I would like, at this point, to please have a motion to go into executive session and invite our city attorney, Alan Mahusky, and then to invite the city manager in, as we need to call him in. So, I have a motion do I have a second? Motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes say nay. Ayes have it, and we are in executive session. We are out of executive session, no action taken. Next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present.
Maybe.
Possibly. Okay. Are present, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council members, okay, meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings, in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public should be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council, to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the public guidelines when participating in the meetings, and I thank you. So, we are now on comments by members of the public. Please remember to speak through the mayor when your name is called. You will have two minutes when you leave the clock. Okay, identify your name and your location, and then you will have two minutes to speak. Is Jennifer Hopkins on?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so let's begin with Jennifer Hopkins. Ms. Hopkins, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, okay, you're welcome.
Okay, I think I turned my camera on. I just have a very simple question, which is that in the letter to the mayor, you mentioned that all department heads were statutory employees. Could we get a definition of what exactly a statutory employee is?
Thank you for your comment, is that your comment?
Yes, I feel that it seems to be a strange heading. Would that be explained at some point, or not at all?
Yeah, so thank you for your comment. Next person, Ann Sharilla?
Yes. Start with a bang. I've heard this before, and so I'm going to have to use my comment to address it. The, the water and sewer funds do not owe $1,700,000 to the general fund. Because if, if I take, for example, Laura Dalton's salary of, let's say, $100,000 a year, of which 60% of it, she said, was paid by water and sewage, and compare Jonathan's estimate of how much he worked in water and sewage, which was about 5%, that's 55% of $100,000, that's $55,000 times the eight years she worked, which would be $440,000 that the city charged water and sewage for just her salary alone. Then add in Karen, what's her name's, and Jonathan Delabrie's $100,000 or so, and that's just an estimate, and it doesn't include their benefit package, which is even more. Then, that would, that would suggest that that money is not owed. And if I take Rebecca's salary, which was 45%, I'm sorry, 40% in water and sewage, times, let's say, $100,000, just, you can, we can eventually do the actual numbers, that's another, times eight, that's another 40, I'm sorry, 32,000, 320,000, I'm sorry. So we're up to, if I take it for the full 10 years, $95,000, nine, I'm sorry, we're up to $950,000, but just two employees who were charging, or somebody was charging water and sewage for them. That's already half of the amount, more than half of the amount. So unless you figure out how much water and sewage should have been charged over those 10 years, or even more, water and sewage doesn't owe, that fund doesn't owe the general fund, may not owe the general fund anything. And so, I, I differ strongly from what Jim says, and I hope that when you consider, you will consider that. And I agree with Rick, that if we wait, if you wait to listen to all these comments until the budget is in process and almost done, you're not even gonna wanna listen to us. So think about whether or not you wanna listen to us sooner rather than later, because we have some good ideas, and, and, you know, Rick, Rick has found most of them on his own, but, but he may have heard me mention them over the years. And so, we, we're not totally stupid, and we might have a few things to help you with.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Ms. Latt?
I'm the City of Newport. I don't even know what I was signing up to say, but I'd listened to what we've done tonight. We sat out there for the usual, God knows how long. It's really frustrating, which tells me just how frustrating it must be for you guys sitting in here. And so much of what's getting done now, or not getting done, is because of dealing with minutia, that an external manager is making you all jump through hoops for. Now clearly, even Jennifer Hopkins' statutory question tonight, what on earth is the point of hair splitting? We have real stuff that needs to get done, the budget is a piece of it. Clearly, people are being fed information elsewhere. It's, it's not okay, it's really not okay. We, as citizens, do not feel protected by this. We have, somebody who comes in here regularly and announces that what's... We have somebody who comes in here regularly and announces that what she's doing is speaking for us peasants. Well, this peasant doesn't need anybody to speak for me. And I think a lot of other people feel that way as well. We have important stuff to do, you as a council do. We also have a hospital that is about to be booted out of here. And saying the building will remain isn't enough. If we don't have a functional hospital here or healthcare ability without driving people over Sheffield Heights, we are all wasting our time. We're pissing our energy away. It is not gonna work. The airport won't happen. Umpteen other things that you're all hoping, hoping will happen, won't happen because why would anybody come here? It's time to get rid of some of the external disruptions and start looking at what needs to be done, regardless of the threats we get. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mike?
Okay. All right. I think everybody knows me, but for the benefit of people who don't, my name's Mike Kutsin. I'm a native Newport. And I live on Sias Avenue, two fifteen to be precise, which is the location of one of the flashing signals that warns people that we're now in a school zone. Bottom line, pretty simply, people come by my house at fifty, sixty miles an hour, all times of the day. Your, your flashing lights don't work. As often as not, if you go down there on a Saturday night at nine thirty PM, the lights are on. Bottom line is, if the lights don't work, people ignore them. And they are ignoring them. I have a solution. Maybe you don't, but maybe you'd like to consider it. One is, let's make sure those lights work when they're supposed to. And I hear all kinds of stories about, well, this person's got control, that person's got control. I don't care. Let's get somebody with some control and control the lights so that they actually work. Secondly, speed bumps. Let's have some speed bumps. So if they come in front of my house fifty miles an hour, well, they're gonna be a neighbor on my lawn. And I'd rather have them do that than, than put a kid in a hospital. We haven't had any, we're very lucky. But a child being injured or worse, a parent walking their child to, to school, then injured or worse, is going to happen unless we do something about it. And a little extra asphalt will make a big difference. West Street, and three people live on West Street in Derby, and they have four of them, I think it is. How about four on Sias Avenue? That's it, thank you.
Don't go away. So I call, I got your message.
Yes, I was trying to get hold of you.
And I called you, then we came here. The message I left you is that I am, the city manager's aware, but I spoke to Travis, our police chief, who's in Boston now, and he's coming back. And as soon as he comes back, he said he's going to contact you and go and look at everything.
Perfect, that'd be great.
Okay, so I did leave you that message. I just wanted to be sure you got it.
Thank you for calling me back.
Okay, and I just want you to know that I did get that communication through to him and he did get back.
So please, and I asked if you'd make sure that, once he got back and you met, that you let me know.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, ready? Next item on the agenda. New business. President Fashan?
I do. So we were reached out to several months ago about collecting some nominations for the Extra Mile Heroes. We had many nominations come in and we've chosen four. The first one being the military funeral, try it again, military funeral with honors team from the American Legion Post Twenty-Three. And that includes Richard Blanchard, Roger Gagnaral, Paul Booten, Leon Jukowski, Bill Smith, Glenn Kippen, Jim Rao, Barb Bell, and Ed Craig. Our second person's name is Sarah Chadgar, who's been a pretty large asset to the city in the last couple of years. We had the nomination of Amy Gillespie, who's run for council a couple of times and is the person who organizes the flags and the bomb of West East Bay. And then lastly, we have John Aldrich, who is the director of the National Medical Science and Education Center. Those were our chosen. And if anybody could reach out to them so I can get some profile pictures, so I can have this edited and not just some random pictures that I find online.
Right, thank you for that. So yeah, so for anybody who's nominated, those persons, if you could get us the pictures, we're ready to get it over and then we'll do the proclamation in November. But we will send those pictures over so it can get up on their website sooner and they can be noticed that they are there and then we'll get them suppressed too. Thank you. Councilmember Charbonneau?
Actually, yeah, it probably already happened. But maybe a formal proclamation from our council to the legislature and the Green Mountain Care Board saying, this is a stupid idea.
Okay, so I agree with you that those are great words. It is a stupid idea. I will draft something and I will show.
So that it shows the city council that's officially against this idea.
Yeah, and so we will, we will definitely do that, okay? And we'll have that for the next meeting, the Rex Regular meeting. Okay. Councilmember Curtis?
No, sorry.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
The city manager? Okay, so I'm gonna take that a little bit further. Okay, I want to announce that we actually had a press conference in Montpelier, and I know that you were celebrating wonderful nuptials. Right, and I want to thank our council president, Chris Curtis, because those strong statements.
Chris Curtis. He's quite rich, you know, by the way.
So on that note, we only need two council members up here. I want the president of the council and this all. I would like to thank the president of the council, I'd like to thank councilmember Curtis, who also had to sit with me for two hours going to Montpelier and two hours coming back from Montpelier. Because they made some really strong statements and they were well-received. And we're united on this and it's really strong and we're not going to let it stop regarding what's going on with the report that came out in North Country Hospital. I want you to know it was highly attended by our community. And I'm also going to be giving tomorrow an update on my communications that I sent out. So I want you to watch for that because I've also been speaking with legislators already and I'm, um, communications that with administrators and so on. So I'm going to be keeping that updated. And, and now with the well-received idea of councilwoman, member Charbonneau, did I get your name right? We are going to do a proclamation as well. So we're not going to stop this. It's going to be very, we will be visible up there. So next item is old business. Council president Fashan, I'm never gonna lose. Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
The city manager? Okay, next item is to set the next meeting, the regularly scheduled council meeting for November four, 2024. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion in two seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Next item, adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-four PM?
Absolutely.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Post say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. And I want to thank everybody for being so patient. Thank you.